Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our meeting this evening on October 1st, Pink October. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cardosa.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Spandola.
Here.
And Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
All right. Today's invocation will be given by Dan Callahan from First Baptist Church at UBS. Thank you very much, Dan. And if we may have the Pledge of Allegiance following that led by Mr. Bassett, if he doesn't mind.
Sir. Mayor Harris, I want to thank you for the opportunity and also the council for being an invitation to pray today. That's great. Lord, we love you. We thank you for this opportunity to come before you. And, Lord, I do pray that you grant wisdom. Serve. And, Lord, I do pray that you put your hand of protection on them, Lord, give them wisdom. Lord, bless our first responders, Lord, each and every day as they risk their lives to protect us and serve us. And, Lord, I pray that we would constantly be in prayer for them. Lord, thank you for officers and police officers and firefighters. And, Lord, just thank you for all that they've done for our community to keep us safe. Thank you for our mayor and the council. Lord, give them wisdom and guidance. Lord, we love you and thank you for all that you've done for us, in Jesus' name. Amen.
So, this is the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Pastor. We have item number one is a, you folks might notice, Givicky Foundation Pink October proclamation. They are not quite here yet, so we're going to skip to...
Yep.
Oh, they are here?
Yeah.
You are here? All right. Welcome. What do we have? I was looking for Larry for some reason.
(laughter).
No worries. Come on down.
Thank you. We have Nancy Elrod and Kelly...
Sheeran.
Sheeran. I wonder who wrote that? All right, well, welcome.
Thank you.
Pink October was founded in 1997 as a single-five-k race for awareness by Larry Givicky in an effort to bring early breast cancer detection awareness to our local community. Pink October has grown into eight, all in the month of Octo... Eight events, all in the month of October. I wonder where that was? All in the month of October, and the money raised goes to the Givicky's Caring for Women Foundation. These events include Race for Awareness, Ride for Awareness, Bowling for Breasts, Pink Party, and Scramble for a Cure. Okay. The foundation has helped over 370 women with up to $2,000 in assistance to help pay for utilities, rent and mortgages, transportation, medical bills, and other costs. Countless women have benefited from the top-notch imaging equipment in the UBSutter community. Rideout Health Cancer Center will be offering a shuttle service for patients going through treatment thanks to the donation of a new ten-passenger Transit Shuttle van through the foundation. Givicky family strongly believes the community, in community service and involvement and making positive contributions that enhance the lives of our community. This year, the Givicky Caring for Women Foundation, listen to this, will reach the milestone of giving back over $1 million to the community to fight breast cancer. Gives you chills. Good, that's awesome. So now, proudly, therefore be resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the City of UBS City, and on behalf of the entire City Council, encourage all residents of the city and UBSutter region to join us in celebrating the Givicky's Caring for Women Foundation and all their generous contributions and support to the UBSutter region, cancer patients, and their families, and to know how much they are appreciated. And, boy, that's an understatement. Thank you so much. (applause). Would you care to say anything?
Just a few updates. Clearly, I need to update my website. We're at about 420 women that we've assisted now with up to $2,000 in assistance. And, just a kind of a cool story, we have an employee that has been fighting cancer for about two and a half years, and he's on Cobra insurance now, and so he's able to go to Rideout. And we just found out that he's been using the Transit for transportation to get to and from his treatment. So, it helps all, the Transit van helps all patients at the cancer center, not just, not just breast cancer patients. And it's our pleasure to be able to help the community in this way.
All right. Can you get a photo, Ben?
All right, one, two, three, please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you betcha. Too bad I don't do cheerleaders anymore.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, moving on to Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency. Mike Bassett, welcome.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. It's my pleasure to be here tonight, provide the annual update. Thank you. My name is Michael Bassett. I'm the Executive Director for Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency. And tonight, I'm gonna, can I turn this a little? Yeah, thank you. No, that's okay. Tonight, I'm going to cover, I know there's some new council members, so a very brief history of Sacramento River flood management, and kind of show you the big-picture map for the Sacramento River flood control system. And then I'll get into details about Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency, our background, how the agency was formed, and then really dive into what projects we're working on, give you a good understanding of what we're working on and where we plan to be in the next couple of years. So here on the big map, this is the Sacramento River flood control system. So you can see the Sutter Buttes up at the top, sort of, oh, thank you, up in here, and then this is our basin right here. So you can see all the red lines, those are all Army Corps certified, not certified levees, but Corps federal project levees. And you can see that they consist all throughout that system. And the reason I like to show this map is to show that we're working with a lot of other flood control agencies in the Central Valley, and we work with them and we compete against them for available funding for projects to protect our systems. So it's interesting, and there's been a lot of advancement in the flood protection world, especially along the Sacramento River system in the past five to 10 years. So we got a lot of work completed, and we still have a lot of work to go. So Sacramento River flood management, brief history. I love this photo. This is old-time Fresno scrapers constructing the levees, so you could tell that they weren't engineered back in the day, and that's why we got to come in and do a lot of the work that we do now. But what's interesting is, obviously, the rivers, the levees along the rivers, those were the natural areas where the Native Americans lived before the pioneer farmers came out and started, you know, farming these areas. And it's been a patchwork of high ground, tying high ground together and forming these systems. And then, and then the reservoir construction came in, Orville Dam, and that greatly improved the situation in our region. But what I'd like to point out, and what really brought to light in the, in the Central Valley, the issues at hand, initially the Paterno decision back in 2003, and that's where the state was found liable for not improving the system, knowing there was a problem and not taking actions to improve the system. Since that day, they've contributed a lot of funding for flood control. Hurricane Katrina in 2005, I was working with the city of West Sacramento at the time. The city thought it had well over 200-year flood protection, and that's when we quickly found out we did not, and all the other systems in the Central Valley found out through the Army Corps, DWR, and FEMA, when FEMA was coming in, decertifying all the levees, remapping everybody into floodplains, that's what really focused all the cities and the agencies that action was needed. Luckily, the bond, the ratepayers, the taxpayers approved the bonds, and that really provided the funding for the work that we do today and the work that we'll continue to do. Lastly, what I wanted to talk about, the Central Valley Flood Protection Plan, that's the state's, one of the actions that came out of Paterno was the state has to have a plan in place, and they have to show progress to completing that plan, and they update that plan every five years, and we play a part in that process. So we sit down with the state representatives, putting that plan together, to ensure that the projects that we need completed are included in that plan and are budgeted in that plan. So, Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency was created back in 2007. It's a joint powers agency. So the two counties, Butte County, Sutter County, four cities, City of UBS, Live Oak, Gridley, and Biggs, all formed that joint powers agency, along with Levy District One and Levy District Nine. So all of those entities came together, formed a joint powers agency, and really started this process of moving forward for levy improvements. As you can see, the system that we have in place protects $7 billion in assets, so that really helped us, pushed us over the mark with the federal government, to show that there's a benefit-cost ratio of doing these projects and getting federal money and getting state money into the system to improve these projects. And luckily, the voters, the voters, the local voters approved a Prop 218 Assessment District back in 2010. Prior to that, some of our member agencies contributed funds to get the process started, performing engineers report, which was key in passing the Prop 218 election, and then we've done a lot of work to date, which I'll talk about. So, the Subuca Vision, vibrant communities in rural areas that protected from consequences of catastrophic riverine flooding. And the reason we have that in here is our agency is strictly focused on riverine flooding. We're not looking at local drainage issues, that's where the counties and the cities come in and take on those responsibilities. Our focus is Feather River West Levy Project, the Sutter Bypass, Cherokee Canal, Wadsworth Canal, the bigger bodies of water that could potentially inundate certain areas within our basin. Our goal in the, in the north, the light-colored area, is providing 200-year protection, so that's for the urban areas, and then south of there is to achieve 100-year level of protection in the more rural southern portion of the basin. So our program approach has been, since we were formed, was that Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency would take the lead for initiating projects. We would be the lead, pushing our state and federal partners to advance our goal. And our initial goal was to partner with the state, using our local match money, using state money through Props 1E and 84, and pulling all that money together and advancing the projects, while at the same time working with the Army Corps, which has a much more slow and methodical process, so that we could get levy improvements in the ground prior to when the federal government could catch up. Subuca Board has passed a strategic plan initially in 2016, and we've updated that plan in 2018. It's a living document, so we'll continue to update it as projects are completed, new projects are taken on, or new visions by the board are articulated in that document. Our organization is very small, so we have an executive director, myself, we have an administrative analyst, Terry Yane, who works a lot with city staff, and then we have basically our consultant pool. We have Chris Fritz here tonight. Chris is stepping in and acting in my previous role as Director of Engineering, and then we have a few others. But we ramp up and down based on the workload, and obviously, we have a lot of consultants working under this org chart here. So we have civil engineers and real estate acquisition people and attorneys, environmental scientists, so we have everybody that is needed to pull these projects together. So here's some of the projects. This is basically what I spend all my time on, and Chris and our team. So Feather River West Levy Project is mostly completed. So we've, we've performed the majority of the levy improvements to date. We have some small projects ongoing. We have a project here in UBS City on Live Oak Boulevard, right at the railroad tracks. It's under construction right now, I'm pleased to say. And we have a couple of other minor, sort of cleanup issues that we have to take care of before we can fully certify the system. So we're in that process right now. We have the Orville Wildlife Area Flood Stage Reduction Project, so that's way up here in the north area, that purple. And that project was added on as part of the Feather River West Levy Project when we had to go back in and compete for additional state funding, and they changed the rules to compete for that funding. We had to have more ecosystem enhancements and environmental restoration-type works in order to achieve a high bar and compete for those funds. And that project pushed us over the top. And it does have a flood stage reduction component to it, so it has many facets to it, and it's actually been in construction for two years now, and we have one more year to go. But it's a great project, it's a great area to walk around in, and it's just underneath the Thermolito After Bay, so I encourage anybody, go out there. There's a lot of hunting and fishing activities that take place in that area. We had the UBS City Emergency Levy Repair Project. So as part of the Orville Dam spillway situation that happened 2017, we found we had, we had three miles here in UBS City that had been completed by the Army Corps, levy improvements completed by the Corps, that we were still wrestling with ourselves, our team, to be able to certify those three miles, because they didn't have record drawings, we didn't feel the wall was adequately constructed based on what little information we were able to find. And when that issue happened and the river went high, about 100,000 CFS flowing through the Feather River, we found we had issues in that area. And luckily, the state stepped up and put up almost 100% of the money to complete that levy improvement project. So we completed that project, along with the Laurel Avenue Critical Repair Project, and we also had other additional 2017 flood-fighting activities that took place. So 2017 was a milestone year for this agency. There were a lot of downsides, but the upside is much, much more now that we have those projects completed. Our state and federal partners also had, they've been doing a lot of work in our basin. So the State Department of Water Resources, they performed some flood-fighting in 2017. They put up the money for our repair here in UBS City. The Army Corps is initiating what they call Federal Public Law 8499 Projects. Those are public repair rehab projects after emergencies. They completed one erosion repair, and we have two additional projects that will be constructed next year. So we're working very closely with the Army Corps on those projects, and they're south of UBS City. So one's near Abbott Lake, it's an erosion repair, and one is an actual levy improvement project south of Laurel Avenue, all the way to Highway 99. So that'll be in construction next year. And then lastly, on this slide, is the Federal Sutter Basin Flood Risk Management Project. That's the, the component of that right now in construction is from Cypress to Tudor Roads down in South UBS City, or south of UBS City. And those proj, that project's in construction now, so they're just wrapping up year-one construction, and year-two will take place next year, and it'll complete those five miles of levy improvements. So this is the famous cartoon that we always show, but this kind of shows you what we do. So it's the cutoff wall right through the center of the levy. Basically, the issues we have with the levees, it's not a height issue, it's not a levy over-topping issue, it's a through-seepage and under-seepage issue. And that's what we've been correcting since 2013, was our first year in construction. So we've been, we degrade the levy about one-third, and we construct a slurry wall down to the clay layer, an aqua-clude layer, and that, that prevents that, it provides an impervious barrier from when the river gets high and all that energy of water wants to flow either through or under the levy, it blocks that. So we have the famous picture from 1955, the unfortunate flooding here that happened in UBS City, and it just shows how important these projects are. So a real summary of the Feather River West Levy Project, it's a, it's a very large project. It'll, once all is said and done, it'll be about $300 million. And so the locals are paying, we're paying about 24% of that, and the state is paying the remainder of that. Federal government will get credit from those investments. Unfortunately, Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency, we won't have any more project here in the basin that the Corps could apply that credit to. So we're looking at other opportunities of possibly sort of selling that credit to other flood control agencies in the area, and the state will take their credit and move it into other basins as they see fit. What I wanted to highlight here, 35 miles of Feather River West Levy Project was completed, plus the additional three miles in UBS City and the one mile at Laurel Avenue. So that's what construction's been taking place from 2013, basically through 2017. 2018 and, and till now is more cleanup work, completing all the small little gap projects and wrapping up all of the necessary paperwork so we can eventually certify that project. So here's the slurry wall construction from what we call a conventional method. So on the left is the long-stick excavator. Those can go down and construct the wall about 85, 90-some-odd feet in depth. Once you get beyond that, you have to switch over to another method, which is called deep-soil mixing method. Back in 2013, we had three of these rigs out at Shanghai Bend, working 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Unfortunately, we started that year late in the season. We didn't get all our Army Corps permits until July, which is very late, because you have to finish up by end of October, and, but we got it all done. It was a mile and a half that year, and then beyond that, we, we were doing well over 10 miles a year. So a lot of construction took place. So here's the Sutter Basin Flood Risk Management, the federal, what we call the federal project. So essentially, the federal government authorized our entire project, but they didn't catch up till just recently, so there was only five miles left to construct, and the Army Corps took the lead on constructing that, those five miles. Like I said, they're finishing up this year, year-one construction. They'll have the levy restored by the end of this month. They'll be wrapping up some work in November, calling it quits for the winter, coming back in early next year to start up on year-two construction. There's things that they can do prior to April 15th, when they can't degrade levees until that time, but there's other work that can be done. At the end of the day, and the last bullet, is that project needs to be certified by somebody. The Army Corps does not certify levees anymore. They won't do that. So the locals have to take that on. So our team designed these five miles, we're out there during construction, and we'll be the ones certifying that project at the end of the day. So we're playing a big role in it, we're just not actively managing it with boots on the ground, like the Corps is. Here's the Orville Wildlife Area Flood Stage Reduction Project. So the little red area up at the north, that's a, we constructed a weir, so when the Feather River gets to a certain stage, it'll start draining itself into this entire basin, and then we have an outlet at the bottom. So it'll reduce flood stage in this area of the Feather River, which is critical, because on the other side is Thermolito After Bay, and they have a relief well system. So that was one of the other components where we were able to achieve a lot of points to get our funding for this project and the rest of the levy improvements. That project, at the end of the day, is going to be $19 million. The flood stage component of it is about a little over $4 million, and the rest is all grant money. It's 100% grant money that we've applied for, and we were able to receive those grants, and we're applying that into this project. So that was, it's a really good project, if you ever want to get up there and walk around and see what's going on, it's a great recreational area. Whoops. Okay, my last slide. So additional activities that the agency's working on. So the first bullet is a small communities grant. So we received two grants from DWR, each in, each about a half-million dollars. And what we're doing with those grants, it's for small communities, so Sutter, the town of Sutter, and then the town of Tudor, which is in the south part of our basin. We qualified those areas as small communities, so we're looking at doing, we're doing feasibility studies, what levy improvements are needed, what type of flood protection improvements are needed to protect those areas. Bottom line is, both of those studies are showing we need repairs along the Sutter Bypass. So that's what we're going to be focusing a lot of our efforts on, working with DWR to bring in money to start doing critical repairs. They know they have to do work there, and like I said earlier with the Paterno decision, now that you know there's a problem, you have to do something about it. They invested in these feasibility studies. Now we're going to be going for second rounds of funding to start designing and permitting and getting into construction on those projects. The other bullet, FEMA reimbursement coordination, back, like I said, the 2017 damages, we've applied for FEMA reimbursements. We were successful in getting some, and we're just closing out that process. It takes a long time to work with FEMA on that. Resource conservation investment strategy, we're looking at, we're partnering with a lot of other flood control agencies, levy districts in the region, to look at ways to minimize environmental mitigation impacts on projects. This is a way to minimize giant garter snake impacts. We've spent millions of dollars in mitigation for giant garter snake on the Feather River West Levy Project. So we're looking at ways to reduce that. We're working with the local maintaining agencies to turn these, now that these levees have been improved, we're turning them back over to Levy District One, Levy District Nine, the state maintenance areas. We're completing the operation and maintenance manuals, getting those through the Army Corps and the state for approvals, and then turning those over to the LMAs, turn all the rights back over and responsibilities back over to them. Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency is not a maintenance agency, we're just a capital improvement agency. Once we're done, we turn them over to somebody else to maintain. We're still working on closing out right-of-way. We had to purchase well over, had to work with well over 150 property owners to purchase land as part of the Feather River West Levy Project, so we're working on that. We only have a, less than a half dozen left to go, and we'll be able to finish up the right-of-way, and then turn that right-of-way over to the state. Environmental mitigation, like I said, we're still wrapping up a lot of projects to mitigate for our impacts, and then really, the big portion of this program is, at the end of the day, we want to provide 200-year certification for UBS City, the other urban areas to the north. So we'll be putting those certification packages together, and that's what the land use agencies, such as yourselves, will be able to base your decisions off of for future development. And just so you know, the timing of that, so now that we're in, the Corps is going to finish up their five miles, we'll be starting up those packages later this fall, early next year, so that one, once that five-mile project is completed, we'll be able to certify the entire system, all the way from Thermolito After Bay to, to south of Laurel Avenue, and, and produce what those floodplain map, residual floodplain maps are, and then we work with FEMA to put the new maps into these areas. So Chris is instrumental in working with FEMA and doing all the floodplain mapping. His team of engineers perform all that work for us. And I know that was a lot of information, and thank you for your patience, and I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor, if there's any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Through the mayor, thank you, Michael. Excellent presentation, as, as is normal by you. I had just one question. I know at our last Subuca meeting, there was a, an assembly bill passed, or not passed, excuse me, it went into suspense file, and it had to do with damage to levees by folks that might, might be riding on the levees or, or living around the levees. Do you have an update on that at all? I'm curious.
I, I don't. We are watching it. It's AB 137. So at the Central Valley Flood Protection Board, I was just there last Friday, and we got an update, it's in the suspense. They think it's going to come back next year. It may be introduced by a different member, for whatever reason, but yeah, we're closely watching that, and, and we work with the levy districts here to see if there's, there's issues, such as, you know, the homeless issues and damage to levees. We haven't seen it as great as, obviously, in other areas, especially to the south in the Sacramento area, but we're really, we'll be on board. I'll be talking to our board, you know, such as yourself, and we'll get board support for that when, when the time is ready, so that we can offer that up.
There was, you had mentioned previously that there's an opportunity, it might have come into a trailer bill. That's, that's not a...
I have not heard about that right now.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, nothing to report there.
Thanks again for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Good. All right. Thank you very much, Michael.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Job as always. Next, we'll move on to Sutter Animal Services Presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, excuse me. I'm a little shorter. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Megan Anderson, and I'm the interim animal services manager. Sutter Animal Services covers an area of 608 square miles. Sutter Animal Services covers an area of six hundred and eight square miles. Our staffing consists of front office staff, animal control officers, kennel attendants, a contracted veterinarian, an RBT, and a shelter manager. Additionally, we utilize volunteers and the outside work release program. Since January, SASSA has taken in two thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight animals. Live release include adoptions, rescue groups pulling animals, transfers to other agencies, return to owners, foster care such as nursing kittens and animals recovering from major surgeries, and release and relocation of wild animals. Euthanasia is offered to the public for medical reasons. This low cost service is provided to the public by appointment only, only on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Sorry, I jumped ahead a little bit here. I apologize. I tried really hard to be organized for you guys, so I'm sorry.
Happens to us too.
Okay. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, here we go. Deceased animals are received over the counter and picked up by animal control officers out in the field. And our license fee revenue appears steady for 2019. I'd like to give kudos to SASSA's three animal control officers. They work incredibly hard to cover that six hundred and eight square miles radius and provide excellent service to the public. Calls for service include abandoned animals, bite cases, welfare checks, barking dog complaints, stray dogs, wild animal calls, animal cruelty and neglect, assistance to police, fire, and sheriff, deceased animal pickups, veterinary transport, and feral cat abatements. I'd like to thank council members Espandola and Boom Garden for being on the SASSA board. We truly appreciate your support, so thank you. So these are some of our local liaisons. Rescue Paws holds an adoption event once a week locally where they pull animals from our facility and show them in a different light, in a different setting. And that seems to be very successful and so we really appreciate those types of partnerships. So outside of our area, there's many animal welfare agencies who assist us. ARF, Pets Without Partners, Mutville. Each one of these specialize in something different. Mutville, for instance, takes our senior dogs. A lot of people think that our senior dogs, you know, don't have a chance in an animal shelter, but that's incorrect. There really is something for every animal. And so we really reach out to any resource that we have and make healthy partnerships with these people to be able to lean on them when we need help. So obviously, we've got Yuba City Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, Sutter County Sheriff, excuse me, CHP, UC Davis, Sutter County One Stop, North Point Veterinary Hospital, the Yuba Sutter SPCA, and Yuba College. All of these partnerships help us do what we do and help us succeed. Our friends at SASSA Group is our nonprofit group. Just yesterday, we funded a dog surgery who had shattered most of his teeth in a car accident. And Newton is doing well today, so. That's all I have. My paper's got messed up on my key ring, so sorry about that. But if you guys have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Through the mayor. Megan, I, I did have a chance to see your notes when you were sitting there and they were well organized. I have to say that I've done the same thing when doing presentations.
Yeah.
That, you know...
I think I'll lose the ring next time.
Yeah, the ring, the ring thing is a great idea. It starts getting complicated, right? But you did very well.
Thank you.
I appreciate, you know, having gone there, not as often as I would like to because it just, you know, I might walk away with an animal like someone we may know.
That's okay.
And so I, so grateful for the work that you do and our team and Brad that, taking care of our animals. And I have seen our staff out on the streets and they just seem to be, I mean, they work really hard. One thing that I did bring up to Brad was that in Sacramento, there was this really cool artwork done in an animal shelter that a local artist helped put that artwork together at, at their animal shelter. And it's all related to, to animal things. I mean, to cats, dogs. I think that's it. No, no, yeah, no snakes or chickens. They don't have chickens in Sacramento, I don't think so. So I would like to share that with you and see if there's any, any interest because Brad and I talked about it briefly. It was nothing more than that to see if there might be, because I know that you, you have that entryway, the hallway, right? And it's so welcoming and I think a little artwork might make it look...
I think that sounds lovely.
Okay, but thank you. Keep up the good work, appreciate it.
And actually, could I just make, I wanted to mention that the last time I spoke with the council, excuse me, it was a SASSA board, but I wanted to let you know that I reached out to some of our regional partnerships. I reached out to Live Oak and we utilized the city of Yuba City. We called local radio stations. We utilized the Appeal Democrat. There were different resources that we hadn't utilized in the past for a recent kitten adoption because we had so many. And that was because of your recommendation that really kind of got me thinking larger, on a larger scale. And it actually made a, a big difference to actually advertise even further out. Because we are a JPA and so we really should take advantage of, you know, what we've got. We've got this great partnership that we should be utilizing, so thank you.
Thank you, no, thank you for following up and sharing. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Just really quick through the mayor, I just want to say thank you to you and your team. Customer service is great. Had a little incident where you guys double billed me for my dog license and it took one quick thirty second call. Excellent, took great care of it. And just, you guys do a great job. I have tons of animals myself and you guys do a good job.
Thank you.
I can't tell if you're poised to talk or not. So Megan, of course, as you know, I've been a recent client. This, this cat, this little baby cat came into my garage. And I gotta tell you, if, I didn't need a cat trap and thanks to Brad for that. And if she didn't bite me, I wouldn't have known all the services you guys provided because I just wanted to find a home for her. And next you know, she's getting, after the quarantine was over, the services you provide, I mean, she's, she got fixed or spayed for free on all her initial humanizations for free. And it was just a really, I'll talk to all your staff. It was very pleasant and, and positive experience. And so you have this cat, I have no idea where she came from. My chowel is going to be very happy she's gone. But the, our city manager's daughter is giving her a permanent home. So there's a success story for you. So, but, but thank you very much. As, not only just the presentation from sitting up here, but as a client as well. I really appreciate all the good work you and your staff do over there.
Thank you and I'll share everyone's feedback. It's, we take a lot of pride in what we do and we're very excited about our jobs. And, you know, it can be very emotional, but you put a lot of excitement and positive energy into it and you've got a, it makes a great team, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right. Move on to a public hearing, number four, a selective traffic enforcement grant to include DUI enforcement and education efforts. Welcome Sergeant Kim Slade.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Harris, members of the city council. Sergeant Kim Slade with the Yuba City Police Department. I'm currently in charge of the traffic unit. What I bring to you tonight is a selective traffic enforcement grant, which includes DUI enforcement and education efforts. This year, OTS granted us in May eighty-three thousand dollars. The eighty-three thousand dollars includes equipment and overtime activities. The breakdown for, of the eighty-three thousand dollars is fifty-three thousand dollars in overtime costs and approximately twenty-seven thousand dollars in equipment and then about twenty-five hundred dollars in travel expenses for training. So within the grant, when I wrote the grant in January, some of the things that I asked for this year was a new message board radar sign. So the last one we got is approximately fourteen years old. So it's on the kind of wear side. So the newer one at the cost of approximately twenty thousand dollars will be with a new LED technology, some imprinting that will make it so the messages are more, so you can get more characters and things like that on it. And then also, we asked for the standardized radars for vehicles. We also requested some LiDARs for the traffic, traffic enforcement officers, motor officers, and then also our traditional DRE, Drug Recognition Experts Training. So typically, we send one to two per year and through the grant, they pay for the travel expenses associated with that. The classes are free, but you still have to pay per DM and everything else for the officer to go. So my recommendation is obviously for city council to adopt a resolution to accept the grant. The alternatives are obviously to not accept the grant because this is a no city match grant. So there doesn't require any additional things on the city's behalf. So, and the grant runs on a federal fiscal year. So obviously, it's October one through September thirtieth, not, not our fiscal year. So like I stated before, it's my recommendation on behalf of the chief of places for this city council to accept the grant. So if there's any questions?
All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on the matter. The public hearing for selective traffic enforcement grant to include DUI enforcement and education efforts is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on the issue, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Hearing no further comment on the issue, I'm closing the public hearing and bringing the matter back to council.
Through the mayor?
Yep.
Like the staff's recommendation of selective traffic enforcement grant to include DUI enforcement and education efforts. Recommendation A, B, and C.
What's C? What's C?
Oh, excuse me, B and C. Recommendations B and C.
The A is just the public hearing. Yeah, so he's, he's probably going B and C. A and B.
Okay.
Is it A? It's A, B, and C on mine too.
Yeah, it's A, B, and C.
Yeah, but the, the resolutions and the authorization of the supplemental appropriation from the staff report items, A and B. Manny, do it again.
Okay, staff's recommendation of A and B.
Agenda is what we're looking at.
Right, correct.
Through the mayor, just to be clear, that's the resolution authorizing the chief of police to accept eighty-three thousand dollars in grant funding and authorize the supplemental appropriation as set forth in the staff report. Is that correct?
That's correct, my recommendation.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, we finally got a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, none. Thank you, unanimous pass. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And those things are not easy to write, so good job on that.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, number five, garden refuse ordinance update. Sounds exciting. Welcome, Ben.
Welcome, thank you.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. All right, this is a long time coming, to be honest. And so what I have before you is in regards to an ordinance update to clean up some, some conflicting municipal code items and give us a little teeth and force it. And so what we have going on is regarding garden refuse, also known as lawn clippings, prunings, leaves, etc. And so we have some old codes on the books from nineteen sixty-nine. There's, there's a code that said it's okay to put it on the street. And then we have a recent stormwater ordinance update that says make sure you don't put it in the road because it could go into the drain. And then additionally, we had another code where it said, put it in compliance with the garbage service, which at that time in nineteen ninety-nine, it was a little bit different, where you put it in a cardboard box next to the receptacle. And so what we've done is staff has looked at the ordinance, and this has been an ongoing problem. As many of you know, you see the neighbors getting mad at each other because they're blowing leaves out in the road. It clogs the storm drains, it makes a mess. We have a difficult time with a street sweeper because when they do put leaves out on the street, our street sweeper can't pick it up. And so, and so it turns into just an issue where it clogs the drains. It's hard for our street sweeper equipment to do it and we're using a lot of resources besides neighbors being mad at each other type of thing and issues for traffic. So, so we looked at it. We, public works staff got a hold of ecology, got a hold of the city attorney, talked to code enforcement, to look at all these different options to figure out and look at the codes. What do we need to do to update it and then have a little teeth in it? And so what we came up with for the proposed modifications is basically to go through and tweak the existing code slightly so they, they gel now. They, they're all basically reading the same thing that is, that is not allowed to put clippings in the roadway or in the right of way unless it is done in accordance with current garbage requirements, which is to put it in the green receptacle waste container or neatly bundle it and stack it where it's tied together next to that garbage receptacle with prunings that can't be longer than four foot in length. And so, and so with that, before we, before we put it in stone here, we reached out to approximately seventy local business. So we looked at our business permits and we, we sent a letter out to notify any of the landscape contractors in the city to basically say, hey, this is what we're proposing to do. We'd like to get your input or feedback. We received one and the one we did get back was positive for it with some concerns that, you know, making sure that they retreat the large contractors the same as the small contractors that might not be applying to it. And then also with that, we, we talked to code enforcement just to kind of go through. By adding it into this nuisance section, basically what this does now is it gives code enforcement teeth to, to give them a warning. So the first process is typically comes through with a complaint. And then it would, we, they would receive a warning that says per municipal code section, this, this, that, it's not allowed. And then if it continues, then they have the authorization now to follow up with an administrative citation if it continues. And that first citation would be a hundred dollars. And then if it, if it happened again, then it would go to two hundred. If it happened again, then the next fines would be five hundred dollars each. If it happened again, then the next fines would be five hundred dollars each time. And so those are just, you know, and basically, the goal is compliance. And so usually, you know, our code enforcement, they really work with homeowners, so we're gonna knock on the door and say, hey, this, this is the rule, please follow it, with multiple warnings is usually how we handle it with property owners, and then with the businesses, we expect them to, to comply. So, so with that, there's really not much to this regarding the staff time, but we think ultimately, it might save staff time just with the reduced issues in the road right-of-way, and, and we recommend approval. So I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Would anybody from the public care to comment? All right, we can bring it back to council.
Through the mayor?
Yep.
Mr. Moody, it says in the ordinance that trees, limbs, branches, et cetera, by placing them in refuse containers, is that limited to those provided by recology?
Correct, so it's, it's, it's specific to the garden, to the refuse provider, to that receptacle. But then it allows for neatly bundled packages next to the container, so not in cardboard boxes anymore.
Okay, as a longtime city resident, who has witnessed a lot of trees, and not trees, but leaves, being placed out there for the street sweeper to come by this time of the year, what's the, what's the city's plan for outreach to the public?
You know, so I, I guess the, the idea is that right now, they're, if I understand your comment, right now, do, do those homeowners actually rake them up and put them next to the container?
That's been my experience over the years, is this time of year, people will place the leaves, they know the street sweeper, the, the schedules, and they, and they push stuff out into the street, assuming that the street sweeper this time of year is gonna come pick them up.
And that's usually where the problem is, with, if it's too big of a pile, we can't pick it up and just stick it. You know, we'll look into options, definitely one of the options that we, tools that we have is where we could put it out on the water bill. We could put some sort of notice at the bottom, but I'll work with staff and see what we could do to try to give advance notice.
Yeah, I'd like to see if it's possible to be proactive about that, rather than have the knock on the door and have a code enforcement officer get after them. You know, I'm sure that people will understand the reasoning why, and you've articulated that, but I do think there's a fair amount of folks that, by habit, push the leaves out and pile them up in the street, so.
We'll work on that.
All right, any other questions, we're looking for a action.
All right, through the mayor, I guess I'll do this. I'd like to do staff's recommendation of the garden refuge ordinance update. Recommendation to introduce ordinance amending the Yuba City Municipal Code to allow the placement of garden refuge, defining violations as a nuisance, and waive the first reading.
All right.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, thank you Ben. Moving on to number six, general plan amendment, rezoning and a tentative subdivision map to create six single-family residential lots, ten duplex lots, a one-point-two-seven acre multi-family lot, and a point-six acre office lot located at Northwest Corner Bridge Street and Walton, presented by Diana Langley, and we have one recusal.
And I have to recuse myself, thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. Hello. This item was before you for the first reading on September seventeenth. I am happy to go through a full presentation again. Otherwise, I can just summarize that this is changing the zoning of the property from CO, which is office commercial and heavy commercial light industrial, to single-family residential, two-family residential, and multi-family residential zone districts, along with the remaining office commercial, and will result in creating six single-family residential lots, ten duplex lots, a one-point-two-seven acre multi-family lot, and a point-six acre office lot. And so with approval tonight, the ordinance would go into effect in thirty days on November first.
I'm perfectly fine with a summary.
Okay.
Unless anybody from the public would care to comment and wants to hear the full thing. I see that, nothing there, so summary is fine.
Okay. So the recommendation tonight is to adopt an ordinance, rezoning the site located at the Northwest Corner of Bridges Street and Walton Avenue, changing the zoning as shown in the recommendation.
All right, through the mayor.
Very good summary.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance for zoning the site located at the Northwest Corner of Bridge Street and Walton Avenue from the office commercial CO and heavy commercial light industrial CM zone districts to single-family residential R1, two-family residential R2, and multiple-family residential R3 zone districts, along with the remaining office commercial CO zone district, and waive the second reading.
I'll second.
Mr. Mayor, through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before there's a formal vote, could this formally be taken out to the public?
Yeah, okay, we can do that again. Anybody in the public care to comment, or anything? Nope, all right. So we have a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, unanimous, thank you very much, Diana. Number seven, I'm gonna go get Grace while I also make, oh, is he, okay. Camping ordinance update, Mr. Shannon, excuse me, Shannon Shafen, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Handle this for me, I'm gonna make.
First of the city council, the city is in the process of updating various ordinances in its municipal code to be consistent with the law. You just saw that with the garden refuse one, where we're doing tweaks to that to update as well. One such ordinance is also before you this evening. The ordinance would do two things. First, it would remove regulations regarding camping on public private, public property. Second, it would clarify regulations regarding camping on private property. Although our office doesn't make recommendations as to policy issues, we do make recommendations to be consistent with the law and to comply with the law. The ordinance before you this evening would do that, and so it is recommended, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Any questions from council? Would anybody from the public like to speak on this item? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Anybody like to speak? All right, seeing none. Recommendation from council?
I move on the amending and repealing of the municipal code regarding camping on private and public. Oh, excuse me, I read the wrong one. Move on the ordinance amending the Yuba City Municipal Code to allow for a placement of, am I reading the right one?
This is item number seven.
Action.
I went to the restroom and I lost track where I was at, I apologize, thank you. Here I go. I, I move that we introduce an ordinance amending the Yuba City Municipal Code to update the ordinance regarding camping in public and private property, and waive the first reading.
Okay, I have a first or I have a second?
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor? I say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, unanimous. I don't have any speaker cards, but I'll, I'll read this anywhere for public communication, number eight and nine. You're welcome, encourage you to participate in the meeting, public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Again, I have no written requests, I don't see anybody heading to the podium, so we'll move on to number, do the consent calendar. All matters listed on our consent calendar are listed, excuse me, are considered to be routine, and can be enacted in one motion, there will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the item that council votes on the motion, unless members of the city council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar or individual action. Nothing polled? All right.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
However you want to handle it, there is a error in the minutes that needs to be fixed.
Okay, what would that be?
The gentleman that spoke from the racket club is Mr. Backus, not Sakkas.
So a typo.
Typo.
I'll correct that.
Okay, so we can go ahead and pass it with that notation, is that correct? All right. Motion approved, approve the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? None, okay. Number eleven, general items, twenty-eighteen Assistance to Firefighters Grants Program, replacement of mobile and base station radios. Welcome Bill Fuller.
Thank you, Mayor Harris, members of the council. Every year FEMA runs a grant program called the Assistance to Firefighters Grant, in addition to the SAFER Grant, and also the Fire Prevention and Safety Grant. Yuba City Fire submitted an application for funding to replace all of the department's mobile and base station radios, and we were awarded, a total of the grant was a hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars. Under this grant, it's a split between ninety percent federal money and ten percent local. So the federal government is gonna be picking up a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-three cents, and our local match is fifteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents. We're very fortunate that we, in the past, we've been able to secure grant funds through this program. It's allowed us to purchase a lot of needed mission-critical equipment at ten cents on the dollar, and which really helps not only the department, but it takes the burden off of the general fund by shifting over to the grants. The action we are requesting tonight is to adopt a resolution accepting an award of the two thousand eighteen Assistance to Firefighters Grant in the amount of a hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars. Approve a revenue adjustment to the fire department budget in the amount of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-three cents, and authorize a budget transfer of fifteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents from account, general, it's a general fund contingency fund account over to the fire department account. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the grant.
Question?
Well, first, I just want to personally acknowledge Mr. William Fuller for the millions of dollars that he has secured for the city through grant programs over the years. And here is another example of that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Secondly, what, what happens to the old radios, is there a market for those? Are they training radios now, or is there?
We may, as with some of our other equipment, we may be able to put this out on like eBay, or either donate it to other smaller departments. Unlike a lot of the personal protective equipment that has, by national standard, have a certain life that you, once they hit that life, nobody in the United States can use. With some of this equipment, we may be able to donate or sell to some of the smaller agencies. The national federal government has gone to try to standardize radios, they call it P-25 compliant. And these particular radios are not P-25 compliant, so that may have a, some consideration on what we can or can't do with them. We'll be following up with that, but there's, I think there's like fifty-some radios that we're dealing with on this.
Thank you. Would anybody from the public care to comment on this? Nothing, okay.
Through the mayor?
Yep.
I move that we adopt a resolution accepting an award for the twenty-eighteen Assistance to Firefighters Grant.
He asked for it.
Yes, yes. I'll hold on.
We'll back up.
Could've swore he asked for it.
He did.
You did.
I'm Elaine Miles, and several years ago, the issue came up that Yuba City and Sutter County cannot communicate. I want to know if that has been corrected, because when you're police, everybody's got to be able to communicate if there's a real issue. So that's my question, please.
Over the past, probably ten years, with the Sutter Buttes Gateway Project up on the top of the buttes, we're able to basically allow everybody to talk to each other regardless of what bands we're on. We're all comply, are going ahead and, and working with some of these radios, we buy, they're dual-head radios, where we can talk on police, fire can talk across all channels. There's also, the Sutter County Sheriff's Department has a mobile dispatching or radio communications van that they can use in an incident for the same purpose, to have multiple, communicate on a multiple level. One of the things in the application that we did talk about was the crash of the U-2 out in the Sutter Buttes as a point to talk about the problem we were having of these radios, we, we have, have a limited number of channels that you can have on it. And in that particular crash that occurred out of the buttes, you had so many different agencies, they couldn't talk to each other. We couldn't talk to a lot of them. So these radios have multiple additional channels that you can add to it, and has that ability to talk on different levels. So that, that's a key piece of this, so, process. The next grant we're going after with this up, this in a few months, will be to try to replace all of our portable radios for the same reason, we're, we're having limitations, they're not P-25 compliant, and this will help all of us in this region. We're gonna try to do a regional grant, so all the fire departments can, can be on one type of radio.
So, the short answer is yes, Elaine, they, yes, they can all communicate.
Yes. Yes. Anybody else?
All right, go for it.
All right, back through the mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution accepting an award of the twenty-eighteen Assistance to Firefighters Grant of a hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and seventeen. Approve revenue adjustments to the fire department budget in the amount of a hundred and fifty-seven, eight thirty-three, sixty-three, and authorize a budget transfer of fifteen, seven eighty-three, thirty-seven from account forty-two, fifteen, sixty-five, oh, six, oh, two, general fund contingency fund to fire department account twenty-three, twenty-nine, sixty-nine, two, oh, one.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, all right, thank you, Bill. Moving on to business from the city council, appointments to Sutter County Homeless Ad-Hoc Committee. This is a result of a meeting we had jointly with Sutter County Board of Supervisors, in a workshop, if you will, regarding our homeless problem, or homeless issues in our community. The recommendation was that we have a ad hoc committee to discuss the issue in more detail. Our city council was tasked with appointing two members. I have approached and confirmed with Mr. Manny Cardoza, our vice mayor, and Councilman Grace Espinola, who have both previously demonstrated an interest in addressing this topic in more depth. And that is my recommendation that we appoint them to the ad hoc committee for our community. Would anybody from the public care to speak on that? Nothing, if not, I will entertain a motion.
Well, I'll do it, since I'm on it. I can, oh, okay. All right, through the mayor, move to approve the appointments to the Sutter County Homeless Ad-Hoc Committee as presented.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, congratulations, and thank you in advance for your hard work on those issues.
It's gonna be a fun time in the community, we're gonna have fun.
Making headway.
Yeah, we're gonna have fun.
Number thirteen, city managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I have a couple of quick items. On Thursday, October eleventh, the city is holding its fourth workshop regarding CalPERS unfunded liability. We will be having representatives from CalPERS attending this workshop to answer any questions regarding unfunded liability. The next item, recently, a thin blue line was installed within the yellow line along Pool Boulevard in front of the police department. The thin blue line shows support for our police department. Chief Landon brought the idea to city staff, and with consideration and approval by the city council, the idea was implemented with the recent road resurfacing project. Next time you're driving in the area, please take a look. I did make contact with the City of Woodland Community Development Director regarding the homelessness program in Yolo County. It was a productive conversation. They use pre-manufactured buildings at about seventy thousand dollars a dwelling unit. It's very cost-effective, they call them manufactured homes. So it's just another idea as we get into this issue and work with the county on our two-by-two ad hoc committee. And I'm gonna continue to discuss it with him, and maybe even visit their pre-manufactured homes, which are on East Beamer Street in Woodland, so it's not, it's not a huge field trip, but it, it. trip, but it, it may be worth, um, taking a hard look at how they are dealing with that issue in that county. And, uh, finally, former mayor and council member, Bob Barkhouse's services will be held tomorrow. The Celebration of Life, uh, will be held at two o'clock at Peachtree. Mayor Barkhouse was first elected in nineteen ninety. He served for twelve years on the Yuba City Council, a three-time mayor in ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-eight, and ninety-nine, and again in two thousand and two through two thousand and three. He was well-respected and well-regarded, and he will be missed. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to Councilmember Boomgarden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Attended an Economic Development Commission Workshop hosted by the city with, uh, attendance by the council, Economic Development Commission, and the public. It was a, uh, a very informative, uh, session, and I look forward to some more, uh, progress coming out of the, that, those meetings. Had the opportunity to attend the River Valley High School, Yuba City High School Mayor's Cup, and provided, uh, bodyguard for the mayor as he, as he, uh, he was mobbed by the Yuba City High School folks and, uh, condolences to Rob Landon for, for his River Valley Falcons. They gave up, they, they tried hard, uh, and they, they came up against a very good Yuba City High School team. One thing that's happening here beginning next week, unless it's changed, and I'm not aware if it has, is, uh, you know, one of the, the, the things that this council's tried to do is, is try to partnership locally as much as possible. And on October eighth, which is a Tuesday, next Tuesday, Sutter County Supervisors will be holding their first, uh, their first supervisors' meeting in this building in an effort to, to, uh, you know, again, share resources where it makes sense to do so. And, uh, I, I think that's a good move, not only for the sharing of the resources, but for the relationship between Sutter County and the City of Yuba City. And finally, uh, city manager mentioned, uh, Bob Barkhouse, this, this was a personal mentor of mine and a, uh, a good friend. And, um, happy to, uh, to celebrate his life tomorrow. Um, he was a, he was a very good leader for this community, who accomplished many things. I think you'll, you'll be amazed, uh, if you're able to attend the Celebration of Life, to see just what this man did for, for, not only for Yuba City, but for the community. It's simply amazing. And I want to thank Mayor Harris, um, for assisting. Uh, I've been asked to emcee the Celebration of Life. Uh, this is going to be one of those, uh, very honored things to do, but difficult. And, and personally, I want to thank you, Mayor, for not only being there on behalf of the city, but, uh, for assisting with that. I know it means a lot to the family, and it means a lot to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Espendola.
I share in that with you, and, um, uh, I'll be there tomorrow afternoon, but, um, it's a, it's a difficult situation, knowing the special relationship between, um, Gail and Bob, and, and I know he's watching us now, and I hope he's proud of the work we're doing. The Economic Development Workshop was interesting because, um, there was a lot of information to help us drill into specific areas that we, as a city, um, along with our commissioners, um, and we appointed two new commissioners to be able to help shape some of those potential plans of the direction that, um, our city will be heading. And, um, the fortunate thing is that I think with our new city manager, uh, Michael is, um, he's keen on the idea of how do we pull all these things together, so I appreciate those conversations that we had, um, that we've had so far and continuing, in particular with, um, the housing, because housing is tied into economic development. Uh, I was fortunate to be invited, um, to a group of women that is called Power One Hundred, and, um, there are a group of strong women in this community, and, um, I was fortunate to be, um, invited and, and be, and to share that moment with them. Each person, each woman that, um, signs up, we're committed to four different activities throughout the year, and each of us donate a hundred dollars. And those, each hundred, the total of that hundred dollars becomes ten thousand dollars, and that ten thousand dollars will be given to Casa Esperanza. So there's a worthy cause in that, and, and this was all put together by women, um, for women, and I'm happy to be part of that. Um, also, it was, um, great to attend the Police Officers Association. Huge turnout, there were so many familiar faces there, a lot of our staff, um, the majority of us were there, but, um, a great event to be part of. The Arts and Harvest, um, I'll let our mayor talk more about that, but it's always a beautiful outdoor event, and he was even nicer this year than it was last year. Um, I, um, substituted for our mayor, attended the Yuba Sutter Arts Council. A lot of activity help, happening with the council, um, tremendous growth in the last several years. You have a really good team there, Mayor, that he's, and Mayor, um, Harris has been extremely active with the group as well, um, raising a lot of funds and potentially adding some new additional arts and some great ideas that are happening here in the near future. The Mayor's Cup was, uh, one of those moments that, thank goodness, I took our, I took a jacket and a couple of friends, because I needed some, some shelter and, um, some bodyguards. It, it was great energy. I cannot say the students and our community, if you, if you get a chance just to go watch that for a little bit, the energy is so, um, contagious, and, um, it's one of those Friday night games, but, boy, Yuba City was just on it. Sorry, Rob. Um, attended the, uh, Soup on Bridges to Housing fundraiser, second year they've done this. It's, it's a real, it's a small event, but some mighty ladies also put that event together. And, um, local businesses donate soup or community members' pot of soups, and they have an artist that, um, does, makes the bowls, and in the bowls, you put your soup and you donate. And that money that we all donate goes directly to, um, to Bridges to Housing, which helps, um, individuals that are having housing issues, and they pay for rental and first deposits. And the last, um, which I want to thank Councilman Shaw, because, uh, Councilman Shaw showed up on Saturday in the soft opening of Better Way, and he really, um, I, I was so glad that you were there to share that moment of opening the, the emergency housing that we have in our community. And you provided some additional thoughts and ideas that I think we didn't have, um, in the conversation, so I really appreciate you being there. And Supervisor Dan Flores was there as well, um, but there are, uh, the tough shits, it's open, and I believe they had, um, two, two individuals, um, and so we're on our way with, um, some additional resources to help, uh, get people into housing and opportunities for them, and to better the quality of this community. That's what's most important. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace. Councilmember Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we've all attended a lot of the same, uh, events and committees and stuff, so I won't, uh, repeat some of the things that's already been said. Um, but we did have the Pur's Workshop since our last meeting. Uh, that is going very well. Um, we were very, very fortunate to have the gentleman come down, um, from the league that used to be there, um, I think one of their legislative, uh, aides or chiefs or something there. Anyway, he knew what he was talking about when it came to Pur's. And, um, it was nice to be able to ask some questions, get some clarity. What's happening is, is the group that is following this journey is finding out, there's not as many options available as we all hoped there were. But at the same time, we're trying to figure out into December, where do we go from here? A couple of ideas that have, uh, come together is talking to Sacramento. Another idea that's come together, and that so far has been, maybe we, you know, lead a coalition of different municipalities to go to Sacramento. So, we don't know. We know that, uh, you know, sending everybody home's not an option, and counseling pensions are not an option. So all the things that we've heard going, it's not an option, and it's, it's becoming real. I thoroughly enjoyed it. We got, uh, October, we got three more to go, we're halfway through, and, uh, I appreciate the mayor being there, and, uh, it, it's been a good time. Um, Transit Meeting, uh, the biggest thing that's going on with, uh, Yuba Sutter Transit, um, we just approved to go out to the RFP, uh, they're going to have to find a new home in the next, could be ten years, could be a lot sooner, depending on what happens with the Seventy Corridor. So they're going to be looking, uh, at feasibility studies for all the changes that go on there, because one of the big changes that comes up in about fifteen years is, um, and that's just a rough guess, uh, or timeframe, is all of the buses have to be zero emissions, and there's got to be enough power at their facility to charge all of those buses. And they're talking about enough power that would power the city of Marysville is what it's going to take to power those buses, so it's going to be pretty, uh, tremendous. So, um, I've spoken with our city manager, we need to keep that on the radar and be open to that, because I know that we'd love to have Transit Authority over here, and with the different things that we have going, that would be a great opportunity to continue the partnership, give them the space that they need, and get some more development on this side. So that would be, that would be a good plus. Um, the football game, love the Mayor's Cup. Uh, chief, I'm, I'm going to give you some, uh, some armchair coaching here, okay? Go back to the River Valley, uh, locker room, have them start watching all this year's and last year's games of the Alabama Crimson Tide. They'll learn a lot. And at the same time, I encourage you to send film footage from this year's, uh, Tennessee Volunteers to Yuba City. And I think you'll be ready for next year. But no, it was a great time. It really was, and, um, thank you to, uh, both schools and Yuba City Unified for having us there and letting us be down on the field. It was, it was great, uh, brought back memories from being in high school. It was, it was really good. Um, of course, went to the, uh, the POA Pig Feed, that was awesome. Love to, uh, support, uh, our men and women who protect us. So it was, uh, my wife's and my great honor to be a, uh, sponsor, and we look forward to that next year. We'll be back. Um, lastly, I will close, um, and just simply put it this way, tomorrow, we are going to have the opportunity to say goodbye and, and farewell and honor a man that I have seen be one of the most influential figures of this area, a man of integrity and a man of great humility. And, um, this community lost a hero, and, um, my condolences go out to his entire family and, um, uh, my friend, best wishes to you tomorrow, because I know what you've got ahead of you, it's going to be tough, but I cannot think of a finer person to do that, so, uh, kudos to you, and, um, our prayers and thoughts are with his entire family, so.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cardoza.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Um, first of all, also, for, uh, Bob Barkhouse, he's going to be a great man. The mayor, he's going to be missed. Uh, he was my auto shop teacher at Yuba College, so I've known him for quite a while through the years. Uh, like I said, tomorrow's going to be a tough day. Uh, on good news, I'd like to announce, uh, want to thank council for helping me, uh, push for the funding from the city, the funding the city helped, also with Sutter County and the school district and everything, but with our assistance, the New Haven Project is a go. We received the eight million dollar tax credit, so New Haven will, uh, they'll be pushing the permits, getting a contractor, we'll be breaking ground, hopefully, uh, summer of twenty-twenty and, and closing and, uh, being done in twenty-twenty-one. So that's a forty-unit apartment complex on the corner of Miles and Garden Highway, so, thank you, council, and it'd be a great, uh, forty folks that will be, uh, have housing. Um, I'm not going to repeat, we've had, we've done a lot of things together. Uh, I attended ribbon cutting for the council for, uh, Burbank Insurance. Uh, the mayor and I were there. Uh, it was a great time, another business in the community, they moved over from Marysville over to Yuba City, welcomed Burbank Insurance to Yuba City. I did the, uh, Count Me In With A Cop at the New Earth Market last week. Our, uh, police department, also Public Works was there. We had quite a few folks, our city manager, Michael Rock was there, we introduced him to some businessmen, had a fun time there. I attended the Food Truck Mania Sunday, great time, there was, uh, fourteen food trucks there, uh, had your variety of everything and anything, had a fun time at that, and of course, the POA, that was also a great time, and that's going to be it for me this week. Thank you very much.
Busy week. Um, like Dave says, there's a lot of repeats here, but the, uh, EDC Workshop, uh, was a very, um, informative, um, meeting we all had, and, and Terrell, thank you for the work you put into putting that together. Um, very good information, looking forward to, um, those partnerships and moving forward with that. It's a big, it's a big process, but we're going to see some positive results, I'm sure. The Pur's PRS Workshop, again, thank you, Dave, for attending that. I think there'd be, they've been at least informative for the folks who are attending, and those of you who are attending, Elaine, I see you out there, for, uh, being there. Pat, I think you may have stopped by before too, if I remember correctly. Um, might not be the, the, the information we want to hear, but it, it is what it is, the facts are the facts, so it's, I think it's a good forum for folks to, um, learn a lot, and, um, I know I certainly did the last time. Um, the POA Pig Feed was quite interesting, it was very good, I didn't get to stay as long as I would have liked to, but thank you very much for the sponsorship on the table, sir. Um, always good time at that. I did have to step out early to go work at Harvest the Arts, is by virtue of my position on the board for the Yuba Sutter Arts, went out there to the Higher Ranch, uh, I think it was as big as it's ever been. Um, we had, had to extend some of the exhibits out into a different part that we've never used before, so I don't know what the numbers are quite yet, but it would definitely look to be a great, a great success. I had the opportunity to travel to Washington, D.C. last week for, um, uh, to advocate for Beal as part of my role at the Beal Military Liaison Commission. Learned a lot, we had at least four meetings at the Pentagon, we met with the, the Secretary of the Air Force, also Mr. John Henderson, who's the Assistant Secretary for Installations, Environment, and Energy, and, um, General, I don't have, I don't think I, I failed to write his name down here. But the point is, um, advocating for Beal, and what they, what we've learned is you might, you may wonder why, what are Yuba City doing out there for Beal? But Beal brings so much, um, to our economy, and they, they, they're a great, great group of people. And so if there's anything that we can do on our end to help support them and make life easier for them, we want to do it. And so sometimes, as civilians, we can say things that folks that wear the uniform can't say to these, to these higher-up folks. Um, and we did. And Janet Snoll stepped up, and we were there along with, uh, Assemblyman Gallagher and also, um, Supervisor Gary Bradford from Yuba County. What we learned was their main thing is, uh, housing, especially E-five and below, they have a tough time finding places to live. And so we want to do what we can to help support or encourage them to build housing on base for these folks, but off-base, we want to do our part, too. When we met with Mr. Henderson, the undersecretary, excuse me, uh, Assistant Secretary, um, they asked, you know, what, what can the local, local folks do for housing? And so that, that reverts back to, I want to talk about CACOG meeting, what they call the missing middle. We have low-income housing, and then we have some higher-end homes, but this missing middle is, um, what so-called missing middle is where we need to really maybe pay some attention to, and I'll get back to that when I talk about CACOG, but it's interesting how it goes full circle with these other meetings that I attend. But, uh, schools, quality of schools, California does not rate nearly as we, as high as we would like it to rate on schools. When you have military personnel come in, they have families. If the schools aren't very good, they're not going to want to come here. Um, and also, the Air Force itself takes a look at that, where they want to not only send people, but it, it affects their decisions when they're assigning missions to certain bases. And, um, it's interesting to know that, that we, we have a, a, a role locally to do that. Schools, and then reciprocity for spouses. So if you are an airman or, uh, and you have a spouse and you get transferred from Kansas to Beal, and your spouse happens to be a teacher, for example, or a nurse, California won't automatically take their, their certification. So they're dead in the water as far as a job for a year, two, three, or however long they're here. We don't want that to happen. So I know the, Assemblyman Gallagher particularly dug down deep into that issue, and not a whole heck of a lot we can do here at the local level, we're there to support, but that is something that we can, need to really concentrate on, to help support, um, the Air Force and their mission, direct, directly from the Secretary of the Air Force, and also, um, excuse me, sometimes I can't read my own typing. I thought I wrote his name down, I don't want to disrespect anybody. But, um, we, we were, expressed some, Kenneth Bray, Associate Deputy Chief of Staff for Intelligence Surveillance and Reconnaissance. But we, we expressed some, Kenneth Bray, Associate Deputy Chief of Staff for Intelligence, Surveillance, and Reconnaissance. We expressed some concern that perhaps Beal might be robbed of some missions, because a mission is money locally as well. And other, other bases were trying to pluck those away from us for money. It's, it's interesting how there's internal conflict in that regard. But we were assured directly from the secretary's mouth that Beal is solid. And now, they, they know that, yeah, we don't, might not have the sexy fighter planes out there and the jets and the war dogs out there, but we, ISR, as they call it, is very, very critical. A quote from him was, "We, we can't go kill anything if we don't know where it is." And that's where Beal steps in, all right? I don't mean saying it that way, because that's exactly what he said. And so not only were they saying Beal is solid, but they were saying they might, they're looking at expanding our, our mission out here, which is outstanding to hear. Again, I have two pages here. I don't need to belabor the point, but the point is the, just that we did a lot of advocating for what we can do out there at the Pentagon. It was an honor to be a part of it. I look forward to more meetings regardless of where they are to help support Beal in the way that we can that's appropriate. CACOG, again, you, some folks think CACOG primarily housing, but they do have a lot to do with, excuse me, primarily transportation, but they do have also a lot to do with housing. Back to my comment on missing middle, what that means is housing changing for density, but not necessarily, housing that looks dense. For example, you can look, you can have a big building. It looks like a night, maybe even a small mansion of a house, but it's actually a fourplex, things like that. The bungalow courts, if you will, the little houses that are, you might park here, but then you walk in fifty yards or whatever to the, to the bungalows, a little densing housing. Then the phrase there is density with amenity. So you can't really have a density if these folks that are living like this might not necessarily have a vehicle. You have to have amenities close by, because it's a walkable community. Because the whole, one of the big things when you're trying to do is reluse, or reduce that GHG, and we have to be down nineteen percent or lower pretty quickly. And so you have to, you can have these houses close, but if they're, if they have to drive everywhere they go, it's a problem. So one comes in the other, and that comes into transportation, what we were talking about before. Let's see here. And there was things we can do as a city, amending our zoning to remove barriers to the missing middle, reduce parking restrictions, of course, rate our GHG emissions and the rating structure, which may be changing. It's gonna get us, we have an MTP and a MTPSCS that we need to get approved. It's gonna affect our ability to get that approved, because the federal's government's changing some criteria. Let's see here. Then the civic lab, they had a, we're part of that lab, the, for CACOG, or Bridge Street Corridor. They gave some very good examples for the city of Live Oak. I'm not tech savvy, or I'd have slides for you, but it was real interesting to see the possibilities. They gave some examples and some possibilities of developing those communities. And the future is a little bit denser housing and try to avoid driving a car. That's what it comes down to, the best you can. And that will mean money, and the government's gonna get off your tail if you, if you do that as much. I'm going to go back to Grace's comment on Yuba Center Arts. There are some very exciting projects in the works, one of which, and I, I, I don't know, maybe Dave would get upset if I say it so early, but that, that little alleyway next to Selleran Suds on Pluma Street, it's a little walkway to the parking lot there. Some cities have what they call Neon Alley, and we have, we have those two signs from the Town Pump and the Spur that folks are trying to, what's the word? Renovate. I guess that's the word. And so if we put those up in that alley along with a few other things, works of art and whatnot, I think it'd be pretty cool, actually a draw for, excuse me, for folks. So Dave Reed was, was working on that as well. I could go on, but let me see if there's anything I don't want to, I don't want to miss. Grace, thank you for stepping up for me. I was in D.C. at the time at the board meeting, so you stepped in for me, and I appreciate that. We also had continuing conversations regarding the Public Safety Training Center that we're hoping to have here in Yuba City, so that is not anywhere close to going away. Senator Nielsen remains very strongly behind that. The Mayor's Cup football game was quite interesting, and Rob, you know, the score may have not been in your favor, but I tell you, you had the coolest shoes on. That's, that's for sure. We could see from clear across the field, so that's pretty good. Yeah. Okay, so having done all that, I do also want to acknowledge former mayor and so much more than that, Mr. Barkhouse. What a great, great man, and the more we dig into his life and meeting with Gail, and it's just amazing. The accomplishments a, a single humble man can do in one lifetime. It was just amazing. So much respect and admiration for that man that we can't even express it. And I've only had the pleasure of knowing him for three years. But many people know, have the honor of knowing him for a lot longer than that, and you'll be hearing from them tomorrow. If those of you who are able to make it will, will do that. So obviously, with Mr. Barkhouse and Bob in mind, we will adjourn in his honor and memory. Thank you very much.